Open the meeting for October 19th. Entertain a motion to accept the agenda as may be approved, amended, rather, as may be amended. We don't have any guests here, so I don't see a reason to move anything.
No.
Okay, all in favor of the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
And entertain a motion to, we've got a couple sets of minutes here, because one was tabled.
Yeah, I'll start.
Of September 21, we'll start with.
Make a motion to approve September 21.
Yeah, we'll start with September 21.
So I'm just, there's nothing really big here, I could just go through with it with Megan or whatever. So like item number six, border liquor control, the last bullet point, there's only two bullet points, but yes, C H, it should be S B. And then there's just one other misspelt, a word that could be used two different ways, but it's used the wrong way later on, so I'll just,
Get on it.
I'll just get on that. But other than that, I didn't see anything else.
I didn't even, I didn't even pick up on that, because I don't really care.
I don't either. We all don't care, but you know, when somebody looks at it and says, why did you become the chair?
In 50 years.
So there's really nothing to change?
No, no, there's nothing to change, I'll just have Megan make, and then it can go from draft to official.
I'll accept, I'll, in favor of accepting the minutes of September 21 as presented, please say aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of October 5.
Where are we here, October 5, yeah.
And I just got this really yesterday, so, you know, if we can just table this one to the next one. Unless you want to take a minute and go through it.
That's up to you, because I looked and didn't really have anything.
No, just give me a minute, because I, Monday's on my busy day.
I don't sure if you can see anything, but.
All right, so, I'm good with it.
Okay, all in favor of accepting the minutes of October 5, 5th as presented, please say aye.
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 So, do we have any select board concerns that are not already on the agenda?
I think there's enough on the agenda right now, for me.
There's enough for me. You okay, Chris?
Yep, I'm good, this is.
Okay. For those of you in the audience and zooming in, is there anything you would like to bring up that's not already on the agenda? Just let us know.
I'm, sir.
Sarah's got her mic on. Go ahead.
We have the trail scoping study on the, which, which I'll speak to as well, I believe Lisa, if she's not already on or joining, she will, she may be, Lisa Davis. But I also, if possible, could just mention something about the VORC grant.
Sure.
No, go ahead.
I thought, okay, thank you.
Do you want to mention it now?
I guess she's going to do it under the scope.
Well, underneath the scope.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if that's the proper time to just put all trail grants together, or were they going to say something now?
We'll do all the trails.
We'll do all together.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Lacretia, do you have anything for us tonight?
I do.
Okay.
So, I only have one renewal, Sunrise Homeowners Association, it's a first class and a third. There, I didn't, don't have that sheet for you, I'm sorry, we moved that power, didn't get that online. So there, they pay their fees, the application's in order, and they, their seminar expires, we'll be, they'll have to do a renewal this December, but the L C will be on top of them for that, so.
So we're just making a motion to the town clerk to move forward for Sunrise Homeowners Association, for a first and third, right?
Correct.
Okay.
That's the motion.
Mm-hmm. Anything else? Oh, Chris can't vote. Okay, all in favor of having the town clerk move forward with the application for Sunrise, please say aye.
Aye.
So I have two brand-new licenses, one, they're both first class and third class, the first one is for Killington Restaurants Inc. So they, we run, they, in the past season, they ran the Jamaican, the Jerk Jamaican Mountain Grill off of their, one of their licensing, the catering, and they have to do that application. But now they are going to license that site with a first and a third class, so they're submitting a brand-new application, which would have to sign by.
Okay, and where is their site?
Jamaican, it's up by, what trail is that up?
It's near Northbrook, North River.
Oh, it's in Northbrook?
Yeah, it used to be the Fat Italian.
It's the building at Northbrook.
Yeah.
Okay.
So they were running it, they have a business somewhere else, they were using a catering license, which had on the liquor license up there.
Yeah.
Now they're just doing it formally.
Right.
Is it true they have like floating, I thought there was something floating with them with their catering licenses, correct?
Um, they, they, for certain, like, I was talking about a certain area, I know they get one, one license for like the reward.
Right now, all we're doing is making a motion for you to move forward with Jamaican Jerk, for that spot.
Yep.
The section in Northbrook.
Yeah.
And then, any catering outside, they have to go, and that doesn't come to us.
Correct.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion for that.
Okay, all in favor of having town clerk move ahead with, well, they're not operating as the Jamaican Jerk, they're operating as Killington Restaurants, that's why I asked where they were.
Yeah.
Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Okay, then the next new license is actually a North Star Cafe, they always had a license at the Capital Capitalization Cafe. And last year, because of COVID, they didn't open, so they never renewed, and because they didn't renew last year, they had to reapply for first and third class.
Make a motion to move, the town clerk to move forward for North Star Lodge.
Okay, all in favor, aye.
Well, you don't, you don't run time, and then you gotta do the whole thing over again?
Right, exactly, it's been a third and a third.
I got one now. It's all right. Lacretia's line, she wants them both back signed.
And that's all I have, thank you very much.
So they don't go home. Thank you. Thank you. So at this point, we're up with Sarah for, Sarah Newell, for the trail scoping study. Do you need to lead in, or is she going to take it?
No, she's gonna take it in.
Okay, you're up, Sarah.
Thanks, so we met, based on actually something that came out of a previous select board meeting, where Devin Neary from the Regional Planning Commission had attended. He reached out, and Lisa Davis, and myself, and Devin met about an upcoming grant opportunity called the Transportation Alternatives Grant through the trans. And so, we're working together to write that grant, actually Devin is, is, we, we talked about the different pieces, and it's similar to, in some ways, has some of the similar things we're looking to solve from a previous scoping grant that we, that I wrote. And Devin is taking it on to write the first draft, so it looks at the whole loop, starting on 100 between the Welcome Center, down to River Road, and how there's a lot of bike traffic and people crossing, and looking for, basically, how to solve those issues. And then, going along River Road, and then coming back up 4, and looking for an entire multi-use bike pedestrian, just solutions for what people are already using the space for, but just in a safe way. So, we are going, we want to let you know that we're, we're putting together a draft for a scoping study, and then get select board support, since we would, before we submit, we would bring it to you, but to confirm that you'd like us to move forward, if there will be a matching piece that we'd have to do, we'd let you know.
Do you remember what the percentage of the match is? I believe it's 20.
It wasn't much, I'll look at the website right now.
I thought it was, I thought it was 20.
This one?
That's the VORC.
Um, VORC actually had no matching environment, yeah, um, this one may have had, um.
Mm-hmm. I thought Devin said 20%.
That, that may be correct, and so, what we're doing is we kind of laid out all the different things that we would have to really consider, and then drill down on that and decide what it would, like, what does that cost to do a scoping on that? And then, that's, because this isn't due until late November, and then, look at what we actually would have to put in towards that, and if that's possible. But I'm looking, I'm looking at their website, 20, I believe, is, is generally what is required. Oh yeah, 20%, you're right, for scoping and construction projects, projects, the minimum of 20% of the total project, so I think we're looking at like 40 for total project cost.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So Sarah, would this, would this be looking at whether you'd be crossing state land, or private property, or that, to, kind of to set out the parameters for how you could move ahead?
Yeah, it would look at everything, so we know people are crossing Route 100 at places that are not ideal. So it looks at the traffic patterns of people already, what, it looks at site lines, you know, even it would think, it would look at the fact of, okay, what would it take to put a Culver possibly, next to Culver, or next to Sherburne Trails? It kind of looks at everything, the problems, and some possible solutions.
Yeah.
And things that are not possible, right, like, we've already tried bike lane. In that high speed, you're talking about like you need an extra seven feet, you're talking about a lot of things that actually probably aren't possible. So it does take a lot of things off the table, and that's beneficial, because then, we have a lot of ideas out there, a scoping study can help you drill down on what's actually feasible, and then you can go forward, either get more grants, or do a capital campaign of some sort.
And Sarah, what's really important about this part here is that the state is getting ready to redo Route 100 and that section?
Absolutely, that is the drive here, they, for, to our benefit, have actually been delayed, and we've reached out to them, we know that they're widening 100 by a foot and a half to two feet, not enough to do a, um, bike lane.
Yeah.
But if we can get ahead of this really quickly, possibly while they're ripping up the road, ability to find another solution. And sometimes those solutions are rumble strips, or, or, well, maybe not at that speed, but you know what I mean, some things to indicate that actually are speed changes at that location, flashing, speed signs, like you have when you're coming into Woodstock. There's all these different things that actually are available to us, and if they're going to be ripping up the road, you know, it's a lot easier than, and easier self from our standpoint to the Vtrans, to get it done.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Very important.
And then I, I wanted to let you know that we put in an application for the VORC grant, there's a lot of money out there for outdoor recreation. There were somewhere around 139 applicants, 39 were approved to go on to the next, to put in a, a letter of interest, 39 were approved to go on to the next phase, and then they're expecting to approve 25. And so our, our letter of interest was approved to go on and put in a full application. So, and that would be to do the next phase of the Sherburne Trails, which is over by Gifford Woods. The benefit is that it would get closer to connecting to our, to the Belmont, so that would be increased tourism for the area. And part of our grant, we'd also be improving wayfinding from the Welcome Center, as like our transportation hub for the town. And also, that puts in some money for more, those, some, some maps, those town maps that had been, that were under the E D T. We put that in as well, because as part of just wayfinding and helping people figure it out, figure out where to go, so, um, the, originally, I had put in for, I, I put in that the town would do $15,000 match, it's not required, but it was part of what makes our grant application look, um, you know, a little competitive.
Better.
Uh, since then, we've gotten a new quote for what it actually is going to cost, so we were working on a 2019 quote for that trail, it's gone up significantly. So we may need closer to 25, or, well, I'm thinking closer to 25,000 for a match, but if not, you know, at least the, the 15, which is already budgeted in our, in our.
You froze.
In the rec capital for trail.
Her thing just froze.
Hmm, sorry.
No, that's okay.
So Sarah.
Which part, do you need me to repeat?
Nothing, you, you, you froze, but then you, I think that's when you stopped talking for a second anyway.
Okay.
Your budget for the trails and stuff, every year, there's a certain amount of money put towards it, it does stay in your budget, correct? They are.
It's, it's a restricted fund.
It's a restricted fund. Do we know how much money is in there right now? I mean, I'm sure it's.
I don't think it's.
It's not broken out separately, it just says for.
It's about 45 or 50,000, it's still in there for trails?
Yeah, I think 45 is, I agree, yeah.
Okay, and then you also started something with the Killington Mountain Bike Club or whatever, to put money up for matching towards building a trail, can you get into that? Because the state wasn't giving us, and we have that money there, but we kind of, the rec department reached out to, to them, you want to fill everybody in on that?
Yeah, absolutely, so, Killington Mountain Bike Club, so we, we had, this trail that we want to build is really important, especially for bike tourism, and we see it as being an important piece of reaching the Belmont. And so, when we didn't get the R T P grant that we had for many years for funding trail building, the Mountain Bike Club and, the Killington Mountain Bike Club and the rec department partnered, and the town partnered, to say, okay, we have this money we generally use for grant matching. What we'll do is, we'll actually leverage it to get matching donations from the community, and that has been successful. I don't have that paperwork on me right now, but at one of our more recent mountain bike meetings, we have had, I believe somewhere, well, I don't want to, I don't want to speak incorrectly, but I can share that at another meeting if you'd like, but we've been successful with raising donations for this trail. So part of this trail build is actually like, this VORC grant is actually a significant portion from the Killington Mountain Bike Club as well. We're saying, starting at 15,000 match from K M B C, and, and that's because we've, the town has put in to say, we, we can match as well, that creates a lot of energy to motivate people to, to donate towards the trails. And so, we're, we're really motivated to build this next piece of the puzzle.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Very good. Okay. Thank you. V M C T A?
Yeah, we wanted to recognize our town clerk, who was, issued an award from the municipal, where is it? Vermont Municipal Clerks and Treasurers Association for becoming a certified town clerk.
Mm-hmm.
She was recognized at a, at a meeting, I believe in September, correct?
The annual conference.
At the annual conference? Yeah, so, we wanted to congratulate her and thank her for her service.
Very much, thank you, thank you, very much. Okay. Are we ready for department budget presentations?
Yep, well, basically, I, we, we put together a preliminary draft this year, and I use that word, I doubled the, the preliminary draft on purpose, because this is a very first whack without looking at constraints, looking at what's, what's being proposed, what do we, we think we're going to have to do. Looking at the, the salary pressures, we're starting to see on the outside, being able to not only hire people, but retain people. We're looking to make sure that we're going to be able to be in the right place from a pay scale level in two years, when the, the minimum wage in the state goes to $15, and now the resort has already moved to the $15 an hour. So what we're trying to do is, is get a head start, so that we're not behind when that comes, and have to have one big increase, although this one's pretty big. But this does include, in this proposal, there's three positions that were not budgeted for last year, one of those we have already filled, which was the, the finance manager. So the, the number's pretty big right now, but we will be looking to do some refinements. We have gotten a little bit of good news, because when we were getting some emails from D A, from the, eh, what do you call it? District 3, as to what we were going to be paying for salt, we thought we were going to have about a $20,000 increase in salt, when we finally got our price, and ended up being the same as last year's. So we're not going to have any increase for salt, and part of that is because we have typically stayed with cargo buying directly from them on an annual basis. They have always given us the state contract rate, even if they don't get the contract. So this year, they have been kind to us and given us a very good rate, even though they have the state contract, and we're not seeing any net increase in the overall salt budget. So $23,000 will come out of this, this line item. You know, I, basically, we'll have, we're going to be having a lot of lengthy discussions about, you know, what things do we want to see, have to implement, what are we going to have to look at, and what changes are we going to need to make? Tonight's, the budgets that we're doing tonight, with the exception of one, have very little change in them, so they're going to be fairly straightforward. But we will be looking to, to try and minimize the, the upcharge, and, and all of these things, you know, when we talk about, you know, I'll slip right into the, the capital portion of it. Looking at the capital budget, it was basically the next phase of the, of the sustainable funding proposal, where we're looking at about $150,000 an increase. And basically, that was bringing us back online, we had a low year in bituminous last year, we had reduced it, but we're actually only $11,000 more than we were two years ago in the 21 budget. So, you know, this was just bringing everything back online to where it was, in some cases, where we made some adjustments for a year, and everything, and we added $25,000 to the public safety building. So, $150,000 at this time, is allocated to those changes, slight reduction in the bonded indebtedness. So, when we did the, the math of all the changes, the lion's share of it is related to salaries and, and personnel.
And when we get into salaries and stuff like that, that's at first, because, like you said, it's preliminary here, that will be discussed in executive session.
That's correct.
Has, um.
This, yeah, this is just the general overview stuff.
Have you, what have you heard from insurance? Are they holding the line, are they doing cost of living?
In shorts, they, when they made their present, go ahead, you want to talk?
Well, I just kind of, just a happy being, you know, I want to got something from insurance.
Okay.
Sounds like, at least the health insurance, sounds like it was pretty flat.
Really?
I'm surprised.
Yeah. And we, and I believe we used the 5% multiplier on the, on each of the policies, but then reallocated them to the, the type of people we have, whether they're singles, doubles, or families.
I'm just curious about.
So it stayed fairly flat.
Bumped things, or what they had done?
Yeah, the only thing that I expect to see a, a change, and I don't think it'll be dramatic, is on the, the liability side, because we did add the public safety building to the policy at this point, so that was a different valuation, so that number is, is being finalized. Actually, we just, I got that a couple, about a week ago, and I haven't updated it, so.
Just so, people who pay attention to this, the old fire department did not belong to the town.
Correct, but we did insure it.
So their liability was not in our budget.
It was, we paid for that, that was all us.
But I'm just saying that now we have a building that the town owns.
No, right, but we did pay all the liability insurance for the old building.
We have a bigger building, so it's going on.
It was, it was, that one was, that building was nine, was a, was value, was a replacement value of 900,000, and this one's at 5.2.
Yeah, so that's where Steve's going with that.
Yeah.
It's not, it's a bigger firehouse, and the town owns it.
Yeah, correct. So.
Okay.
So with, with that, I'll just move quickly into the department budgets.
Without going into salaries or whatever, I mean, other than.
I mean, the budget, we have a budgeted number in the salary line items, but we're not talking about anything specific. Okay, so, it's basically what's in the book, salaries and wages for the select board. The only change in this is the, from 6,000 to 9,000, because when the, the voters approved, the, the $3,000 stipend, but we don't have any advertising or dues and conference money in there for this.
So I, I have a question on that. It was budgeted for six, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then, we voted to go to, well, it was, it was budgeted for two per board member. Then we voted for it to go to three, and it was a separate line item, so everybody can vote on it. When that happened, and that was in March, it really shouldn't be an increase, because it's just.
It's not.
Well, I'm just getting at, so like, how many other, and then, did we take that into consideration when we did our? Because if there's anything else in here where we didn't, that we had a separate vote, like the $100,000 for the sidewalk?
That was, that was in the budget.
That got put into the.
That got put into the budget.
At one point, we were talking about.
Right, we were talking about doing it as a vote, but we didn't.
And then we just put it in, okay. So, I mean, I just, you know, I go through here, I'm just looking at certain things, and I'm going through it, and I, I see a 50% there, but I'm just like, no, it's, we voted on it, and it got put into the budget for last year on March, and the budget starts July.
So where's the difference in the line?
So, so there's no, there's no, there's no increase when you do, when you do that, but then I go to, um, another page here for the solid waste on page one, two, is it three? There's a solid waste one in here.
On the revenue side, or the expense side?
I think on the expense side.
Because I have, that's back for.
No, revenue, revenue.
Revenue?
Revenue, and it says, budgeted F Y 22, user fees 30,000, budget F Y 23, 30,000, and then it says change, in parentheses, 100.
Yeah, that shouldn't be there, the 100's not, there's no change.
I know, but then it messes up the whole, if it's taking into all these calculations on your Excel spreadsheet on the change, to show a 1.53% increase.
I'll review that, I didn't see that 100 there.
That's all.
Okay.
So, I mean, I'm sure there's, you know, some others that.
Yeah, no, we have, there will be refinement. So, so basically, you know, are there any other questions on this line item?
I mean, as, we're doing a budget, and it's just a preliminary, and we'll have our questions probably in the next week or two. Because I mean, I, like, once, yeah, I just got this really yesterday. So, I can't, you know.
Well, right now, he's just asking about select board.
Yeah, no, no, oh, okay, yeah, no.
No, we're just, only, the only ones we're going through are the ones on the agenda.
Yeah.
So, that's select board treasurer, bookkeeping, auditing, listing, tax collection, town clerk, B C.
You know. Because at the same, I'm just going to save some questions, because, because these are really, most of these things here, select board treasurer, bookkeeping, auditing, it's salaries, that's what they mostly are.
Right.
I, I don't want to talk about that out in public on a preliminary report, I want to get into, into an executive session later on.
Yeah. Okay, treasurer, um, the only difference is, is, yeah, well, the part you want to talk about in select board. An executive session.
Yeah, that, that's what I'm getting at.
So I'm saying, you know, but this is the preliminary budget, and we can go through, and, you know, if you want to, since all of the change is really related to salaries in every one of them, do you want to just save all of those for executive?
Yeah, that, that's what I was getting at, I mean, it's preliminary, and I don't want to, you know, it could be somebody that, maybe they're too low, and we want to go higher, maybe there's somebody too high, we want to go lower, I don't know, you know?
That's fine. So, and, and, and that's okay, I mean, that, and that's the question, and what we will do is, I have, I have a separate spreadsheet that's just all the salaries that we will discuss at that point.
So I mean, like, you know, like, when we go into, and we're not, Recreation is not on this one right now, so, okay. So that's fine. Salaries and wa, salaries and wages is just going to go into the, into executive session, so.
Are you going to talk about Recreation today?
No, no, you're on the next meeting.
And I, and Mike.
Bye everyone.
See you later, Sarah.
Night, Sarah.
So. So, yeah, that's, that's where all the, the discussion surrounds, in, in a general sense, is by position. So we can table all of those and have that discussion in executive session, and then.
Yeah.
Re, make any revisions.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
So are we two golf financials now?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So, the golf financials to date are from July 1st through September 30th. The, the golf course just closed on the 17th. And we will be going, at the second meeting in November, we'll be doing the.
We don't.
You do have it, it just got printed lousy. It was, the things didn't print. I apologize, we had no.
Do you have it on?
Yeah, it's up here.
Okay, that's all.
Yeah, it's up, it's up on here.
I wasn't looking that way.
They're doing the power thing?
No, no, I know, they're all right.
And we, I tried to have things printed here and for some reason, those two items didn't print well. So, when you look at the overall cart fees, everything is up just a bit. Expenses hold pretty well, and when you get to the bottom line, um, total revenues were about $26,000 ahead of where we were this month last year. And we look at expenses. Expenses are running about $14,000 less than last year, so we have a, about an 11, about a $13,000 net revenue increase from the golf course last year to this year at this time.
Expenses are higher.
Eleven, yeah, 13,000 higher.
Yeah.
In net revenue.
But, uh, okay, expenses are up, revenue is up 25, expenses are.
Expenses are up 14 and the other's up, the, whatever that was, 20.
25 to get to.
Yeah, 25.
25, okay.
So, so, I mean, I think right now, you know, everything's on track for getting where it's supposed to go for next, for this year. We will have a meet, when we have the meeting on the 16th, we will be going through the next year's budget and then they can look at it from a golf season perspective. We can put together the numbers to say, here's what the season did comparatively.
Right.
And then, and then, look at the capital budget at that time as well.
Will we get a report on how many rounds of golf actually paid?
Yeah, they did.
Comparison over years?
Yep. Yeah, now, we will get all of the, that information at that time, cause they will close the books by the end of October and then we will have that report.
But, we'll have comparison years.
Yes.
Yeah, they'll show, uh.
Yep.
Drinking, all of the good stuff.
Drink.
Food.
So.
Rounds.
Yeah.
The pros balls.
They actually have someone who checks carts that they aren't bringing their own liquor on the course? Mm-hmm.
Only reason I didn't download the treasurer's report.
So, I'll make a motion to accept the golf, um, report, financials.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye. And then, we have the town. Well, we get the, and then the town.
This was the, yeah, the treasurer's report when.
So, that was just the town, that was just the golf course?
That was the golf course. This is the golf treasurer's report.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, currently, the balance, we have a $516,000 balance in the pro shop and 120,000 in the.
Restaurant?
Restaurant.
And we have a $100,000.
We have a $100,000 note we have to pay back at this time.
So, wipe out the 100 out of the restaurant, add 20 to the 516, so we're around 536.
Yeah.
Um, and then, they have, um, 530, 530.
102,000 of it is, is restricted funds from when the town placed the $100,000 over there.
Right, okay. Do we remember where we were last year of how much money they had on hand going into the end of the season?
It wasn't that much.
I remember.
I wanted to say it was like 300.
That they had enough money to finish, just barely.
Well, we didn't, we actually didn't have to borrow any money till April.
I know that, we had that discussion.
It was like.
They didn't finish in a bad spot.
No, like 250, 300.
Yeah, I was gonna say it was close to 300.
Yeah, okay. So, they're, they're, they're basically, uh, you know, 200 and some, 230,000 above.
100,000. I mean, if you look at operations to operations, from the cash perspective, cause 100,000 is the money we, the, the town put in for the capital.
Mm-hmm, yeah, well.
Okay, so, that's counted in this as well.
It'd be great to see your, your comparison and.
No, we can, we can actually do that with the treasurer's report, look at your, your in.
Just make sure we're going in a right direction.
Yeah. And typically, typically, we were, up, up until prior to last year, there were times when we were like, counting all the dollars to make sure we were gonna pay our 250 before the end of December. We had borrowed 250,000 and this year, we only had to borrow 100 and we have way more than that. So, it, it's definitely much better, but we could, we could put some actual numbers to that.
So, the only thing on, okay, so that's, this is the treasurer's report.
Yes.
And I know it's, I've had a conversation with the creature, the, um, the reimbursement due to town for prior year startup. Um, it's 352, cause the auditor just gives you a flat number. Uh, we used to have a number that was just for, and I'll say, the term that I started was one year that there was a $72,000 and whatever.
Right.
I, I'd like to see what that number really was. What exactly, was it 72 on the dot or is it?
No, it was 72 something.
Yeah, so I'd just like to get that number.
So, basically, the town was funding more money into this enough.
Well, the, the one year, the, the $72,000 that I'm talking about was, we made a switch to Brown Golf. And at the first couple of years, it was Peter and John McCauley still worked for the town. Cause we didn't want, they had a pension coming and we didn't want to just force, they were the only two. So, we kept it at that, so they stayed on the town, whatever, and there just wasn't a transfer of the money back from the golf course of that year. That's all that was. But, I just wanna know what that number is, just once I have that number. I have something I wanna, you know.
Yeah, I know where you're going.
And then, the 200 and something odd thousand.
283 was there before.
Was from previous boards that they didn't loan the golf course any money, they just paid their bills. I'll leave it at that.
There was, yeah, 200, the, the 283,000 carried over for a long time. And then, we, there was a 72,000 that got adjusted two years ago.
Understood.
And this board, let Steve, myself, and Chuck, at some point, we've been talking to the auditors about that 200 and something thousand at some point of, we think they're never gonna be able to pay it back. So, we're gonna put it up for a vote to, to, to just clean the slate or whatever. But, so, I'd just like to have that number and then we'll talk about that.
Yeah, we just gotta look up the journal entry.
Yeah. So, I'll make a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye. And, and when you just go up to the top on the treasurer's report, just for the town side or whatever, is what I always do is that I look out and you see that, you know, for the town, for the town side, it's 7.4 million in the bank. If you add up the, the 5.3 or whatever and the 2.7, you know, we need almost eight, so we're, we're almost there, but we still have a November collection. And we normally get in like 2.5 million dollars, I think, or whatever. So, we're, we're good on that, which makes us still like a third year that we're not borrowing money to fund our future operations. Thank you.
Planning ahead. It started over here on the left with planning the budget ahead of time, so.
So, so, we go to the comparative for this year, for the town. So, on the revenue side, um, we are, you know, we're, we're collecting ahead of where we were last year. I think we're in a good place overall. We've collected 7.2 compared to 6.3 million and that does include the, the state money at this point. That'll be adjusted here shortly. Uh, we are still working on how to do that on, as we do the collections. Um, clerk fees are ahead of last year by a couple thousand dollars. Uh, zoning fees and fines, that fines number is about to become about $24,000.
That was the first person that had the closing on the condo.
Yeah.
So, there should be a 17.5.
The 17.5 is almost here. The 6,700, we just collected in October.
And then, 5,000 on the other.
On the other, yeah. All of those were October collections.
Right, okay.
So, that money will all show up at the next, at the next meeting when we have our financials. Yeah, everything else is tracking. We're slightly lower at this point than on solid waste. Um, not sure what that's related to. We're on schedule with our state and federal highway payments, local option tax. We're 4,000 ahead of last year at the same time. Um, basically, from a budget perspective and from a planning perspective, for, this'll be the third year in a row, we're just carrying the same budget numbers for options tax and if we have a, a traditional year, we will have a significant surplus related to that, so, um. In the, in the treasurer's report, going back to that, the one thing we don't have identified, and I don't know if we should, is the little over $100,000 for ARPA funds. Like, should we account for that? Did we set up this restricted fund? Okay, okay, cause I wanted to make sure we were identifying that. Um, from an expense perspective, I don't see, there's any, nothing out of the ordinary. We have fully funded all of our restricted in capital funds, um, which is, you know, heavy for the beginning of the year. Um, but we're.
So, since, since you made the comment on the solid waste department, you don't know why the fees were lower.
Yeah.
Then, why don't you go to the expense side?
It's lower as well. No, it is. No, it wasn't, I just, I couldn't remember.
No, it's not as busy down there. The last summer was crazy.
Yeah.
Last summer was nuts. I mean, people were coming in, like, it was crazy.
Yeah, a lot of people moved in and cleaned house.
Yeah.
And brought it down.
So.
So, when you, can you scroll up like two inches, stop right at bonded, so we can see all the bonded indebtedness? You know, this is great to see, like, you know, we have, I mean, what it's saying is the payment, but I'd like to know what's the balance?
The balance is in the book. You wanna have that on here too?
Yeah, I'd like, I mean.
That's fine.
You know, I mean, we're making a payment to our 545,000 Green Mountain National Golf Course debt, you know, 35 grand. But, what's left to it? How many more year, I mean?
There's, it's 23.
23, okay. You know, so by 20, what is it, 23 or 25?
25, everything's done except for the, the new one.
And the new one is the?
The 1.08, 1.183, which was the, the refunding of the 2.53 that we retired.
And that's not in here because this is not, this, that's not next year.
Correct.
Okay, so, all of those, the, all those Green Mountain National Golf Courts by 25 is.
Are done. The, the, the original $5 million one retires in 25, the 545 matures in 23, the 500 already completed.
Well, this, the funny thing is this, oh, okay, you have debt and then you have interest.
Yeah, we, we started, and the reason they're not like, and they're not associated next to each other is because of the way the numbers work and, and them work and the way they print out. So, but we do have, we're separating all the interest from the bond payments.
And the 2.53 million deficit, that was ended and that's what we just turned into a 1.183.
1.183. And only for eight years, not 10.
Right.
We went to eight years to get that done.
And, and so, the golf course bond debts will really be over eight years from this year.
That's correct.
Okay.
And that would, and if you total the, 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 um.
And that's the bond payments that we make to banks, that's not.
Right. The, that, and that, those three items equate to about 220,000 a year at this point.
Yeah.
Adjust, and that's principal only.
Right.
So, that will be a, you know, when we get to that point, like, if we're able to, well, what, if we continue doing what we're doing now with the golf course and funding it and, and it's, it's gonna dramatically change things and you would know that at that time, if we're stable, that they will be able to pay for their own capital at that point.
Yeah.
Okay. So, as these other golf course debts retire, would we consider keeping our, what we would normally pay against one debt and adding it against the existing debt? So that our payment doesn't really go down, but it reduces our overall payment faster?
Well, what's the interest rate on the eight year?
Is it allowed to do that bonding?
I wonder, it's, it's, well, this is a bank loan.
Oh, yes, okay.
What's the, what's the interest rate on it? It's like 2.23.
2.2 and a quarter or something, and so, something like that.
The way interest rates are gonna, let's, let's wait until next year.
Right.
Our prices will probably go up 2.2.
I mean, reality is, cause the 23, debt, debt retirement, um, the, the 23 is the 545, 24 is the 1.4 million highway bond and 25 is the other golf bond.
We're gonna have, they, they end like 20.
And the garage, and the garage bond ends in that time too.
Yeah, but I know what Steve is saying, but I was just saying, let's wait until that year, because I, I think your sustainable budget worked in those things disappearing to do other stuff.
The key, the key to the sustainable budget is, is minimal reliance on borrowing. That's its overall intent, like, when we get to a point that we, we find we're sustainable, we let, we let the bonds debts go away and we continue to fund them correctly, we will then be able to pay for these things with our money versus having to go borrow money. That's the, the whole intent.
Yeah.
Of the process.
So, the 545 goes away in 2024, you said?
23.
23.
23, that goes, this goes, this one goes in 24. Garage goes away in either 23, no, 24 goes away also, the garage bond.
39,000, yeah.
Uh, and the FEMA bond, I wanna say that's probably in 27 or 28.
Give garage interest in there only?
No, there's a garage payment there somewhere, not up top.
It is.
Cause that's the, the, we're paying 30,000 a year in principal.
So, the next couple of years, we're gonna shed a lot of bonds.
We're gonna shed four bonds in the neighborhood of little over 200,000 a year.
Great.
I'm good with that.
Okay. So, that's, that's the financials. Our net technically is better at this point, you know, it doesn't really mean a whole lot, but it's, we're in a good place and I think we're, we're on track to meet our budget requirements. So, basically, again, just like last year, the only variable we really have is the options tax.
I would think you'll see a stronger third quarter.
I think you're gonna see a crazy third.
I know.
I think the state, forget about the, you know, the state. I mean, you think about it, like, all these salaries that are, you know, like, they never budgeted, like, the resort going at $15 an hour. I mean, their, their payroll taxes receipts are gonna skyrocket, you know, the 9% on their rooms and, I mean, the rooms, the rooms in this town, I mean, it's going crazy.
It is, but you're, don't forget, not everyone's renting in full occupancy either. They're cutting back occupancy, they don't have enough staff, but we're.
Prices are.
They still, you know, prices are up and it's based on a percentage offer pricing, so. Definitely to the plus.
I think, I think we'll see a 10% minimum increase on the option tax.
If we get 10%, that'll put us right about flat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
And if they can find help, they can stay open more.
Exactly.
You get Preston's is closed two days a week because they can't find anybody to give their kitchen staff a day off. And I know that's, I'm sure Chris can tell you.
Same thing on some of the restaurants up and down the hill.
Everywhere down the road.
Yeah.
Okay, managers report?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Um, well, I wanted to make an announcement. We've hired a, an assistant town clerk. Um, that's Peggy Neisner and she will be starting, I believe it's the, November 1st. Um, so, we'd like to welcome her aboard.
Yeah.
And, uh, I think we've, we've been lucky to find someone with those qualifications and this quickly and is a town resident.
100%.
Very good.
Great hire.
Yeah. Way to go, LaCreacher. With this, her department, she voted in. I'm sure she threw the hook out.
Very good.
All right, we'll keep you for another year.
Uh, that's, we hope you stay another year.
No, no, five years, that was the hit.
It's not us anyway, she's voted in.
She's three.
LaCreach is over there laughing. We have no control.
She's on camera, that's okay. Okay, and the garage lift?
Yeah, the garage lift, um, we noticed a few weeks ago that a couple, a bolt had broken on the garage lift and we do get annual inspections, so we called the company in to come in and do the inspection now. Um, there's evidently been several issues related to it and we've been getting annual inspections, but, um, the repair bill for that lift will be about $13,000. Um, both Ricky and I are looking. Um, both Ricky and I are looking at, you know, we, we have only certain things that we do with that lift, um, related to oil changes and things of that nature, so given the very high cost of repair at this point, we're thinking about going without it for a while and seeing how we do. I don't think it's gonna make a ton of differences. So much of the work we can't do in-house anymore because it's just like with the cars, all the electronics, it's, you know, we had Alan Naylor last year try to work on a truck with, uh, to redo the wiring, typically very simple, but when you go into the, once he got it wired up to the cab, couldn't do any more of it, so we actually had to take it to the dealer anyway. So we don't think that at this time, that's a, a value that we would like to put that money in, but I wanted to make you aware that the, that the lift is currently inoperable and we're not, we're not using it and if we find we don't need it in a year or two, we will ultimately just take it out.
So what happens, heavy snow night, one of the hoses underneath or somewhere goes and they gotta get, they gotta get, and they get it back.
Are they too heavy?
Hoses, we're do, we typically, every truck is worked on, there's enough space underneath between, with the creepers and regular jacks.
Okay.
And the locks that, you know, when we have to put up bodies, we have all the.
I just wanna make sure we're, we're looking at that.
Yeah, we, we definitely.
Not in the shops.
Typically, we do not take, we have not taken any trucks on the lift to do hose changes to, to date.
Okay.
The only, we tried to rebuild an exhaust system once and that didn't go as well either.
There's probably certain things we shouldn't be doing.
Would there be room in one of the buildings for a pit?
Pits.
Where you could walk down in and they drive the vehicle over the top and then they can stand up and work on it?
That's a whole new discussion and there was a choice between a pit and that lift and with the number of rules and regulations, there was.
Well, that's why I'm asking, I'm just.
Not to go pit anymore.
I'm just curious.
Pits, pits have, they're easier, but they have so many more issues related to what you have to do.
Okay.
So. Um, public safety building and region sign, um.
And the region sign is down at the bottom?
At the bottom of Killington Road. The only reason the region sign is in discussion is I had, we had, uh, Wooden Wood who did our, um, signs for the town earlier on. This was one that was done in the middle, but you can see how the frame is starting to fall apart and things of that nature, so we're gonna want to be, uh, looking at how we're gonna budget for these, you know, repairs and replacement. Um, the reason the conversation came up about the region sign, we were talking about the possibility of putting electronics there and we started looking at some of the issues.
Yeah.
That are going on, so these are things that we're gonna wanna include in the budget that currently that item is not in there. Um, they did give a proposal, um, for the public safety building sign.
Right.
Um, right now, it appears to be about a hundred, they're saying about eighteen to twenty-four thousand is what they expected to be, to be metal. Um, I don't know where I did with the picture, but it's just a, a rough sketch at this point. Um, but it is a sign that's about, just about half the cost of what we were looking at with, with the other design. Um, basically I have to sign a contract to spend a couple thousand dollars to get the final design done. Um, and I'm recommending that we go with them for this. I did reach out to Greenscreen, they've decided not to bid on it. And so we've had three different proposals. One was forty thousand, one was, is eighteen to twenty-four and one declined. Um, so.
What was the forty thousand?
That was the one that was done with the architect during the construction that was basically using, to, making it match the exact building materials and looking like the building. And I can find that one.
No, I'm just curious.
So.
So with this particular sign here has, is it just the town or do we include the resort?
This is just the town.
Because we're the base for.
It's the town, we just, we, we, you know, I mean, the resort paid for the banners up and down the Killington Road and we let them put some stuff up on there. I mean, that, that was started a long time ago and it was, it was the town that put, it was the, the.
Yeah.
I think it was really the, the original KPAA, whatever they were called back then, that they did that fundraising auto, I think.
Auto, yeah.
Yeah, so it's a town thing. We don't wanna get the resorts paying into and.
So we're looking at an LED sign?
Yeah.
On the bottom, we wanna put an LED on the bottom so we can put some.
George Kong?
Yeah.
Yes, he's the one that we've been getting our pricing from.
So. Forty thousand?
No, 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 no. The forty thousand was for the structure, the sign was another fourteen thousand.
Okay.
And at the fire department, the fire department has agreed to fund the electronics portion of the sign.
Great.
And in our new purchasing process anyway, if it's under forty grand.
That's correct.
You don't really need them.
Purchasing policy.
That's correct.
And it's two separate items, just so you know.
At this time, at this time, they're not budgeted items, so I would want to make sure the select board is on.
The lower frame member of the frame of the sign is gone.
Yes.
Right.
Basically, you'd have to rebuild the frame and then we're gonna figure out how we're gonna support the electronics, is what it amounts to.
And it makes, because like Sarah or whoever, in the middle of winter, like going in there and snow shoeing and to change it.
So did we move all the zoning in terms of electronic signs or?
We got approval for these two signs, we actually went to the, to the.
We went to the.
I don't remember this one, I remember the one.
DRB we went to.
We went to DRB and we got a.
We got approved for the town.
The town got a, a variance.
A waiver.
Waiver.
A waiver, because the, the, they can be waived and the town technically doesn't have to follow its own rules, but we wanted to make sure we did. And the issue for us is also looking at, if we do it, a sign like this, will there be able to be the ability for that to continue up the road? And what would the restrictions have to be to make sure they make sense?
This is our test.
This is, these are the test cases.
Okay.
Well, I think something needs to be done with that sign sooner than later.
Yeah.
Even if we lost the lower portion for a bit, but.
Yeah.
If that sign falls apart, we're not gonna look good.
No.
So.
And, and they're coming, they're, they've already been on, they've been down on site and I just have to, I'm signing with them and we're getting this stuff going.
What's the turnaround to finish this thing?
To finish all of it?
Yeah.
Uh, I'm not su, they haven't given me the final date. The issue for the, the one at the, at the, uh, public safety building is.
Well, I'm getting at the, because this one's falling apart.
This one, I, I will, this one is much quicker turnaround and I gotta get a, a hard date from them.
I would like to, um, personally, even if we had to forego the sign at the bottom for a bit, making sure that that upper sign is replaced.
Yeah, okay.
While we work on the LED.
While we work on the others and, um, again, it's still investigating this LED stuff that we're. Before we go nuts.
And since we're talking about signs, I'm used to being in buildings and grounds on a school and you ask everybody for their wishes. Their wishes. This is in the middle of town and we have a sign on both sides of it. When we come in from Mendon or from Bridgewater. You only have one side. And I've always, like, so coming up and when you're leaving Killington, it's just a blank sign. And something like, that, you know, when I go to Tahoe or something or.
Thank you, visit again.
Thank you, visit again, or Killington.
There used to be something in the west of Mendon.
Yeah.
Those old brown ones used to have it.
Yeah, and, and part of this, we can have, we'll have these conversations with Sparky about.
Sparky.
It's Sparky Potter, Grace Potter's father. Um, who, and, and getting a, so we can get the proposal and start to put a plan together to address these items.
On both ends there, I just think we should have, and do we have one out on, um?
That's the old one.
That, the one hundred one, and I've already talked to Sparky about that, that was the one that.
Over by the golf course.
Yes, there was one coming down on south of one hundred.
Right.
And I've talked to him about that and he's given me prices to do that because they were in the original proposal and then they never got to do it.
Well, I'm just saying, I wanna see, you know, we got this and the firehouse, but we have three other ones leading into town, which brings me up to my next thing on the Route Four area.
I was gonna give you that next.
I've never, okay, I'll let you, where is it?
It's not on there.
Okay, so if you.
The banners are gonna be up in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. So, 'cause the banners.
The banners are a mess and.
The first, I just wanna say, you know, I remember them first going up along Route Four and then you just get so used to driving the road that they disappear on you because I live here.
Yeah.
And then two or three people like, oh my God, oh my God, and I, I finally looked up and I'm like, those things are like wrapped around and they're just, they're not there.
The, and the issue, the thing that took it a little longer to get was finding somebody who would put them up because Greenscreen doesn't do that anymore, they're not doing the install, um, so, but I have an installer and he, they told me within the next couple of weeks, they'll be putting up the new banners.
What are we putting up as banners?
The same thing that was there.
Okay.
But yeah, I have a price for those. It's just over five thousand for everything, um, and they will be installed in the next couple of weeks.
And then that brings me up to my next thing that we have in this town. And it's the cell tower on Killington Road.
It's a property.
I'm not beating up on the owner of the property. The town is the one that did this whole marketing, whatever, and we have to. I believe that that's, can, is it canvas up there?
Is it ca, no, it's not canvas.
What is it?
It's panelized.
It's a panel that's painted.
Well, whatever, I think it has this winter and I think it's done. And so there's somewhere in this town hall, what it costs for those panels or whatever?
We did not pay for those.
Well, then we wrote up the agreement with whatever wrong because it should've been that they have to replace them every whatever. So if we didn't, if we didn't pay for it, then let's find out what those panels cost because it's, it's the town sign, it's not the business owner's sign. It's the town that said, if you want to have this tower up, this is what you have to do.
Oh, no question.
And this, I don't wanna go into, you know, like seeing that thing falling apart that up there is just, you know, brighten up the colors.
Agreed.
That's it for me for signs and banners.
Thank you.
Okay. So we, uh, is there other business other than signs and banners? Other that's not here? Uh, are we doing executive session for things tonight?
Personnel.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna go for personnel.
Discussionary discussion.
Okay.
Personnel, we could do contracts, we could do legal.
Maintain a motion to go into executive session, if someone will make that motion.
So moved at seven thirty-five.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.